To the time of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with all their liberties and justice for all.
See how nobody wants to sit next to him? Thank you all for joining us. Please let the record reflect that all board members with exception of Mr. Brady, Mr. Rosa, and Mr. Zotto are present. Any announcements? Are there any members of the public who should speak on an agenda? Thank you. Can I motion for the approval of minutes as contained in your pack? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Person? Mrs. Burns.
Thank you, Mrs. Geller. So this is always the time of year where, as exciting as it is for the next sixteen people whose names I read, it's a little bit of a sweep for us as a district. This is the meeting in which we approve our retirements of our instructional staff. So, I am going to begin. May I have a motion for the approval of retirement of Joanne Sue Silwitz, Director of Information Technology, effective September 1st, 2018?
Discussion? Sue, on behalf of the Board and really, I think, the whole district, I want to thank you. You have been really such an integral part of so many of the exciting things that we've done here over certainly in all the years I've been on the Board. And we're going to miss you, but we thank you for everything.
And I thank you for all your support as well, because it couldn't have been possible without the Board's support, that's for sure.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
And so I had the pleasure of starting with Mrs. Silwitz back at Udall, I think in 1994. We both started together, and we both progressed through a variety of different jobs within this instructional environment. And, you know, we've talked a lot recently about the legacy that you leave in the place in which you work, and you will be remembered, and certainly we will miss you for the legacy you have left for all of us and everything that you do, because I know you've put your whole heart and soul into everything here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone that doesn't know, Mrs. Silwitz has been really right in the middle of smart boards.
Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
Redistricting, don't forget that one!
That's redistricting. You know, bandwidth expansion, wireless access, but anything that, you know, all the exciting things that the kids are doing today in classrooms, Mrs. Silwitz has really been at the forefront of. So, we'll miss you.
Okay. Next. May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Constance Allen, World Language, effective July 1st, 2018, after sixteen years of service?
Move. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Stacy Anne Fack, Elementary, effective July 1st, 2018, after thirty-three years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Nancy Butka, Science, effective July 1st, 2018, after twenty-four years of service?
Move. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Denise Sanghetti, Family and Consumer Sciences, effective July 1st, 2018, after twenty-two years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Dr. James Chiravino, Psychologist, effective July 1st, 2018, after thirty-one years in the district?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Marie Sefeli, Elementary, effective July 1st, 2018, after nineteen years in West Islip?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Colleen Dallas-Davona, Social Worker, effective July 1st, 2018, after eighteen years of service to the district?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Deborah Bonworth, World Language, effective July 1st, 2018, after thirty-three years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Elizabeth Hollis, Special Education, effective July 1st, 2018, after thirty-eight years with the district?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Tricia Masaro, Special Education, effective July 1st, 2018, after twenty-five years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Dr. Robert Matusi, Psychologist, effective July 1st, 2018, after twenty-five years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Brenda Mayo, Elementary, effective July 1st, 2018, after thirty-three years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Donna Montalbano, Reading, effective July 1st, 2018, after twenty-four years with the district?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Kathy Nekedemo, Family and Consumer Sciences, effective July 1st, 2018, after sixteen years of service?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Jennifer Giro, Social Studies, effective July 1st, 2018, after seventeen years of service?
Discussion? So, if my math is correct, I have three hundred and ninety-eight combined years... Discussion? Three hundred and ninety-eight years of service and dedication to the district, and more importantly, to students of the district. We thank you all for your many years of service. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We wish you well. Okay. May I have a motion for the approval of leave of absence pursuant to FEMLA for Tara Probert, Social Studies, effective July 8th, 2018, through February 15th, 2018, unpaid? Sorry, may I have a motion?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That was an amendment to an original date that we had... May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment for Lori Grimaldi, Cafeteria Aid, effective March 9th, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment for Michelle Jackala, Part-Time Food Service Worker, effective March 9th, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of a change in title for Deborah Falcone, Accountant Treasurer, effective March 9th, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations. May I have a motion for the approval of a child bearing leave of absence unpaid for Christina DeLeon Mezacappa, School Nurse, effective March 13th through May 25th, 2018?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute custodians listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute nurses listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute Special Education Aid as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the 2018 Spring Middle School Coaches as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Behavior Intervention Service Provider as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute teachers as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And may I have a motion for the approval of substitute teaching assistants as listed in your backup?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Geller.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. Rule, vertical update.
Thank you, and good evening. So we have now completed our deployment of the One-to-One Chromebook Initiative at the elementary level in our grade classrooms. As I've mentioned before at previous meetings, those classrooms were already outfitted with Wi-Fi, and we were able to reallocate some funding that we had for grade-level carts, which cannot be utilized without a school-wide Wi-Fi in the buildings. We've also had our technology intervention specialists continue to provide the professional development and support to classroom teachers and students. And we are now working on a plan to pilot the use of the Chromebook carts at the high school level. We're hoping that by the certain funding in the school year that we will have a wireless infrastructure at the high school, and we hope to be able to also work on a plan to have deployed to either a whole-grade level or certainly to have some tryouts of the pilots for using Chromebook carts. And today at West Islip High School was DNA Day. If you don't know what DNA Day is, it's a comprehensive, full-day biotechnology field trip for which three experiments are conducted using our in-house biotechnology equipment. And this year, the experiments included DNA extraction and PCR tests to the presence of genetically modified food items, simulated crime scene investigation, and bacterial transformation. And we're very excited that the end of November marked a very important initiative as our World Language Honors Society students began their elementary fless program. The students are teaching at a variety of grade levels at every elementary building in the district, and the students have reported back that their lessons have been a great success and that the younger students are enjoying to learn another language. This has been a wonderful opportunity for our high school students to share their talents and their wealth of knowledge with the younger students. And we hope this program will go into effect in May, and it will give people, the volunteer teachers, the opportunity to have these upperclassmen come in and teach language lessons to their students. We are really appreciative of the thirty-eight elementary teachers with volunteer led classes for this program. I'd also like to give special thanks to Mrs. Patty McDonald, our World Language Lead Teacher, facilitating the program's initiation, and to Mrs. Abimati, who has helped the students put together the lessons. Furthermore, I'm really, and we are extremely grateful, for the time and dedication that our senior students have given to this program and make it successful. They really are truly, truly incredible students. At this time, before I ask for a motion, for the exception of the updated Response to Intervention Plan, I do just want to note that as we expand Response to Intervention, that we not only will be expanding it up in the grade levels for providing support in literacy and in math, but also to address the social-emotional needs for all of our students. And so with that, we have been exploring different programs and using a positive behavior intervention approach, trying to take a proactive view to try to find the needs of the students and addressing them by tapping into their strengths. And certainly with the addition of the social workers that we've had at the elementary school, this has really helped us move forward in that regard. So at this moment, I would like to ask the Board for a motion to approve the updated Response to Intervention Plan.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rule. Okay. Mr. McGinnis, we will discuss the meeting of the Audit Committee.
Thank you. The committee met on Tuesday, March 6th. Committee members present, myself, Paul Muchua, Scott Brady, Steve Geller, Kevin O'Connor, administrators present, Wendy Duffy, and Superintendent Burns. The committee met with our internal auditor, Miss Colin Dinowski, which Coffee represented them, to discuss our draft of the Risk Assessment Update Report. The internal auditors will review our controls and procedures to help identify any risks in how we perform the functions. And we reviewed previous findings, and there were no material risks. The next area of focus they will have will be a detailed review of the HR function, review of how we handle our capital projects, and the use of facilities. Meeting adjourned. Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Mahalik will discuss the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Good evening. Finance Committee met on March 6th, 2018. Committee members present were Ron McGinnis, Scott Brady, and myself, Superintendent Burt Tenness, Steve Geller, and Kevin O'Connor. Administrator's present were Ben Turner, Lawrence, and Wendy Duffy. Others present were Debbie Falcone, Robert Nissella, and Pam Clanton. Our visit to the meeting was due until the end of discussion of current fiscal matters. The meeting was called to order at 7:41. Treasurer's report was of the school district funds for January 2018, and also the extracurricular for January 2018. It was presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll summary report for January 2018 was presented and accepted by the committee. Financial statements for the period of 7/117 to 1/3118 were presented. Internal claims audit report was presented and accepted by the committee. Assistant manager board trail for February 2018 was presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll certification for 2/918 and 2/2318 were presented and accepted by the committee. We had the review of warrants, which the Finance Committee received the warrants. We reviewed the board agenda of finance items. We had the approval of budget transfers. It was presented and accepted by the committee for submission to the board. We had approval of surplus. With the high school, we had high school technology equipment and materials. We had the approval of donations. Within the high school, we had the technology department, Dennis Pope, and 1994 Pontiac Firebird Formula V8-6, with a Kelly Blue Book market value of $2,900. Technology Department also received a small machine services LLC, Delta 15 thickness plan for wood and extra cutter knives. That was a value of $1,250. We had approval of a change order from War Consulting Corp., which is $2,990. We had approval of 2017-2008 health service contracts. In Bay Shore Union Free School District, there was ten students, which is $8,178.10. The Comat Union Free School District, we had two students, costing $2,223.20. The Smithtown Union Free School District, we had four students, cost of $3,699.40. The approval of the 2017-2018 Special Education Contract with East Islip Union Free School District. We had the approval of the 2018-2019 Affordable Care Act Administration Agreement. We had the approval of the request for proposal of the CDW Government LLC District-wide Technology Upgrade and Hardware. Custom Computer Specials Incorporated is a district-wide technology upgrade installation. Richard Coffee and Colin Dinowski, he reviewed with the committee the 2017 Annual Risk Assessment Report, which Ron McGinnis discussed. Meeting was adjourned at 7:55 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor will discuss the meeting of the Education Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Geller. Good evening, everybody. The Education Committee met earlier this evening here at District's office, and the meeting was called order at 7:15 p.m. Members present were myself, Mr. Geller, Mrs. Burns, Dr. Rule, Lynn, and Mr. Mahalik, and Mr. McGinnis joined us when it ended the meeting. First on the agenda was discussion of the Special Education Program. The Education Committee reviewed a proposal moving the location of some of our special education programs. The changes would provide an opportunity for integrated co-teaching model in both the north and south side elementary buildings, a natural feed to the students' home middle school, and equity in the administration of the programs. The plan would be transitioned into effect to allow all current students to remain in their buildings. Next on the agenda was the discussion of a possible fifth-grade teen teaching idea. Elementary principals and Dr. Rule and are exploring the concept of teen teaching and departmentalization in grade five. This has been an organic exploration based on suggestions from the teachers themselves. All teachers would remain ELA teachers, and subjects that would allow teachers to become experts would possibly include math, science, health, and social studies. A model is being developed to determine feasibility of such program. And last on the agenda was a discussion of academy survey results. West Islip School District has been exploring the idea of offering STEM Academy in the high school where students could delve into multi-layered areas of interest in math science, computer science, and engineering. An advisory committee was formed, and realizing the potential for multiple academies, created a survey tool for eighth and eleventh graders to solicit input from our students, and the results were quite enlightening. And the meeting adjourned at 7:40 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And Mr. Mahalik will discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Buildings and Grounds Committee met on Tuesday, January 9th? No, that's not correct. We met actually on March 6th. Committee members present were Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Brady, and myself. Board members in attendance were Mr. Geller and Mr. McGinnis. Administrators present were Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Duffy, and Mr. Bossy. Others present were Gary Robinson and D.B. City. Meeting came to order at 7:55 p.m. We had an update on bond projects that were provided to the committee. Some of the topics discussed were high school roof, its replacement is completed, glass open items of fascia work above the auditorium. A little auditorium renovation in cafeteria ceiling, the line replacement is completed. Previously purported issue of one section of the new high school bleachers has been repaired, and now is working properly, and the bleacher installation at Beach Street is completed. Udall bleachers are scheduled for replacement down in the spring break in April. The turf field to be installed on Barberry Field was discussed. Job will take longer than the summer break, as in order to be ready for the fall season, the job will begin prior to the end of the school year. On the high school pool liner, there were two small bubbles in it that were noted, and after draining, a small hole in the liner was discovered and found repaired. As a result, the bubbles in the liner cannot be replaced at this time, and the pool was rebuilt and renewed. However, the contractor will be returning this summer to adjust the bubbles. The district-wide flooring work is now completed. And as has been reported in prior E&amp;G reports, the committee has been working on plans for the new security vestabules, where our buildings and majority of Tuesday's meeting spent on discussing and reviewing updated blueprints and cost estimates to the vestabules, the four elementary schools and the two middle schools. The options for the security window ledge are discussed at length. It should be noted that bulletproof windows is a misnomer, but there are different degrees of bullet-resistant options in addition to options that are more resistant to shattering, thus making entry into a building more difficult. The committee came to a consensus that the option that would result in preventing or at minimum significantly delaying an intruder from gaining entry into the building would be the best option. Finalizing the plan for security vestabules is a top priority item, and we're hopeful in light of the recent tragic event in Florida and the great deal of news coverage on school security, that the approval of the plans from New York State SED will be more expeditious than the noble timeframe for state approval. The committee also approved an additional security personnel to allow for 24/7 monitoring of the district's security cameras for school security, and intercom by delivery bays to enhance security, and other considerations for increased security, including exploring a security consultant for the district. Committee also received an update on Phase III bond work. The SED architectural approval was achieved on February 28th. The SED engineering approval was achieved on March 6th. We are now waiting on the SED project manager's sign-off, and are hopeful to have it possibly as early as tomorrow, March 9th. The target date for the substantial completion of Phase III bond work is scheduled for 9/118. Additional information provided to the committee included, small portion of the Westbrook parking lot will be paved during the April break. All tenants have been notified. An option for replacement of the high school attract sign on Lion's path are being looked into. The current sign is no longer operational. And the meeting was adjourned at 9:15 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the Committee on Special Ed, Preschool Special Ed.
Thank you. The committee met yesterday, March 7th. Committee members present were myself and Ambria Rosa, administrators present, Jean Dowling and Dr. Rule. The meeting began at 12:00 p.m. As usual, we were presented the CSE and CBYC recommendations for the month, and all were in order. It was noted that the annual review process has begun. The high schools have started, and the rest of the school will follow shortly and will be completed over the next couple of months. And we also discussed, as was mentioned in the Education Committee, the proposal to realign where some of the classrooms are placed throughout the district. The committee adjourned, the meeting adjourned at 12:30.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinnis. And Mr. O'Connor will discuss policy.
Thank you. This is the second reading of two policies that are being revised. I will read the policies. First policy is Policy Number 7122.2. The subject is release time of students. Written requests from the parent or guardian for the release of students generally will be honored. The appropriate time and reason absent shall be recorded on the attendance record using procedures mandated by the state. The building principal shall assume this responsibility or shall designate an individual to review and approve all requests. Release time during school lunch. High school seniors may be permitted to leave the school during lunch period, subject to rules and regulations established and enforced by the superintendent to assure, A, that the students have parental permission to leave the school grounds during this period, and B, that the students exit in orderly fashion, obey driving rules, and return promptly to classes. This privilege may be rescinded for a senior or group of seniors who loiter in public places, commit a public nuisance, but do not observe the school-established rules. Release time during school day. When a senior has fulfilled all graduation requirements, they may be granted the privilege of leaving school property after 7:00 p.m. Other students who are scheduled for a study period for the final period of the school day may be granted this privilege to participate in an approved or verified work-study program or verified student employment. The administration shall ensure that, A, students have parental permission to leave school grounds early, B, students have good attendance history, C, effective September 2019, seniors are carrying a minimal course load of 6.5 credits plus physical education and sufficient credits qualified for graduation, D, students have a verified or paid or unpaid work reason or career connection, example, job coaching or internship, and E, entering and exiting of school properties conducted in orderly manner, and students do not loiter upon or near school property. Students granted the privilege to leave early shall not be provided with bus transportation to or from school. The second policy is...
Wait, let's...
Do you want to...
Captain Motion to Approve Policy Number 7122.2. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Second policy is Policy Number 7224. Subject is community service. The Board of Education desires that students shall become concerned, connected... The Board of Education desires that students shall become concerned, connected, and contributing members of the West Islip community and the world at large. To this end, effective with the class of 2022, it is expected that all students engage in community service as a requirement for graduation. Those students who have completed 100 or more hours of community service during the high school careers shall receive diploma endorsement and will be recognized with a seal that will be affixed to their diplomas and through notations on their official high school transcript and in the graduation program. Regulations will be developed to guide the community service and involve them in the program.
Now, motion to the approval of Policy Number 7224.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. O'Connor will continue on with the Health and Wellness.
Health and Wellness committee met on Tuesday, February 13th. Members present: Tim Moran, Rhonda Pratt, Chris Kettie, Trish Valetti, Alene Deboe, Patty McCade, Jessica Olsen-Hop, Sharon Kerenger, Priscilla Olson, Lorraine Pacchadani, Julie Tenestra, and Monica Foging. The financial report was reviewed. They discussed a vacant presentation that was then given to them on February 28th at 7:00 P.M. in the Beach Auditorium for both parents and children. Social media, smartphone, and gaming health implications were discussed. To increase community awareness of the negative health issues from unrestricted use, explore community presentations regarding mental health issues of unrestricted use, and educate children to become aware of possible mental health issues from excessive use. A volleyball tournament was discussed, and Harold Teld, the sixth grade, was on Friday, March 2nd at 7:00 P.M. at the high school, and the fifth grade tournament was on Saturday, March 3rd at the high school, and the committee approved funding for DJs on both days. At the time of the meeting, the newsletter was currently in print, and we've received it since then. Next, they discussed mindfulness. Mission to be updated. District is hosting a mindfulness instructor certification program on April 18th through 21st. Five West Islip educators can attend for free, and five to have practice. The second annual color run was discussed, and the committee is exploring a date and logistics for the event on the high school property. New and old business was discussed. The Alliance would like to inform the community about the Health and Wellness Alliance, and then many projects and initiatives. And the next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, March 13th at 9:30 a.m. in cafeteria at Blue Open Source School.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. We did not have a Legislative Action Committee meeting, but a bunch of us have been quite active the last month or so. A bunch of us attended the Longwood Legislative Breakfast. I attended the Nassau PTA Legislative Conference, and Mrs. Burns and I met last Friday with State Senator Boyle to discuss the financial condition of the district and talk about state aid and various things of that nature. We'll be meeting a week from tomorrow with Assemblyman Ray and Assemblywoman Calabrio for the same purpose. Okay. Financial matters and business items. Mrs. Duffy.
Okay. First is the Treasuries Report. The balance in our accounts on December 31st was $11,539,74.40. And the balance in our accounts on January 31st was $52,742,144.43. Next item is budget transfers. I have a motion to approve the general fund budget transfer number 3467 to 3471, and the capital fund budget transfers are number 3468 to number 3473.
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have two donations. The first is from Dennis Pope, a 1994 Pontiac Firebird with a value of $2,900. And the second is from Small Machine Services, a Delta 15-inch planer with a value of $1,250. May I have a motion to approve the donation?
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have three health service contracts. First with Bayshore, an amount of $8,178.10. The second is Comem School District, $2,423.20. And the third is Smithtown School District, an amount of $3,699.40. May I have a motion?
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And motion to surplus miscellaneous technology equipment that is at the high school.
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And motion to approve change order number two with more consulting, an amount of $2,999.
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a motion to approve the Special Ed contract for 1718 with East Islip School District.
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a motion to approve the request for proposal for the district-wide technology upgrade to be awarded to CDW Government for the hardware and custom computer specialists for the installation.
So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And if I just might say that this will enable us to move forward with the installation of the wireless at the high school. So we're very excited. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Can I have a motion for the approval of notice of public hearing, budget vote, and election of the West Islip U.S.E. So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of Affordable Care Act Administration? So moved. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have the motion for the approval of the UPSU MOA regarding the retirement incentive? So moved. Discussion. So this is a retirement incentive for members of the UPSU bargaining unit. The basics of it, if they come up with three or fewer employees, they get an incentive of $10,000, and more, more would be $15,000 per. And Mrs. Duffy and the board have looked at this and calculated that this would result in savings to the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Geller. So as Dr. Ruhlman mentioned earlier, it's been very, very busy here, and educationally a lot of very exciting things going on. I hope that many of you had the opportunity to see our school musical last weekend. It really was terrific. The students did three performances of The Wizard of Oz, and whether it was the acting or the music, the kid orchestra, the costume, the set design, and I'm sure I'm forgetting something, it really was an outstanding performance and really displayed our students very well. So thank you to all of them and to all of the faculty members that participated and managed to get the very best we could out of that group of children. So thank you. Today, I also had an opportunity to visit the IV Science Class to see what was going on with the DNA testing up there, and it really was very exciting. And also, our orchestra teacher, Mrs. Fowes, did a little tour with the Udall Road Middle School Orchestra to the two north schools, Openoch and Manituck. I visited the Openoch performance, and the kids were very, very receptive there to their older classmates, and it was really neat to see them become very, very excited about our string orchestra. So I think that bodes well for the future of music, particularly in the orchestra area there. And tomorrow, the Beach Street Orchestra will be visiting the two south schools, so I think that's a great opportunity for them. We also spoke a little bit about the vague presentation that took place. It was very well attended. I think people received the presenter very well, Stephanie Sloan from the Department of Health, so we thank the Health and Wellness Alliance for coordinating that. And the next opportunity for you to come out and learn about some of the challenges that our children are facing is on April 16th, when there will be a social media presentation. Mr. Hiran will be sending out more information from the Alliance, probably if not tomorrow, early next week, but I really would encourage you to come. You know, there's been many, many papers written recently about the negative impact that the extensive social media has on this generation of children. So I think it really behooves all of us to educate ourselves in that regard. And finally, our next budget work session will be Tuesday evening in right here in the Beach Street Cafeteria, and we will be covering curriculum and our extracurricular programs as well, so I would encourage you to come. So I recently returned from the State Superintendent's Conference in Albany, and gratefully, that trip was sandwiched between the two Nor'easters on Friday and yesterday. But on Monday and Tuesday, various groups visited the state capitol to advocate for issues of interest to schools, including the budget, of course. And as you can imagine, there was much discussion about the security of our schools throughout the state. Earlier this week, the New York State Senate passed a package of critical school safety measures that would strengthen security and help keep students safe. Now, of course, the Assembly will weigh in with their own suggestions, and everything needs to go to the governor ultimately, and that's where you, as our residents and New York State residents, really weigh in, because it's up to all of us to advocate for those things that are important. So the Senate bills increase the ability of schools to hire qualified security personnel, create new state funding mechanisms for infrastructure investments that improve school safety, including facilitating the approval process for various bonds and smart schools, which we had alluded earlier, take an exceptionally long time up in the state. It would also increase access to school-based mental health services, expand state actions, and intelligence coordination to protect schools against attack, and of course, to strengthen penalties for crimes on school grounds. The Assembly took action on Tuesday. They took a little bit of a different approach. Rather than prioritizing school safety upgrades, the Assembly focused on gun control in general, and their package was smaller and included legislation that would limit access to weapons by strengthening the vetting process and ability for law enforcement to confiscate weapons of those that pose risk to themselves or others. So of course, they need to come to an agreement as to what is in the best interest of the state, and we look forward to seeing what happens there. We are also encouraged that our representatives, as we've pointed out, understand our concerns. Tomorrow, County Executive Steve Bollone, Suffolk County Police Chief Sue Cameron, and Sheriff Harold Tuon, and the Suffolk Superintendents will host a press conference to discuss the county's active shooter protocols related to schools. So they too are taking a proactive approach. On Monday night, this coming Monday night, I would invite you to attend a meeting of the Suffolk Legislature, at which school safety will be the primary topic. And on March 15th, the Suffolk Superintendents will be meeting again with Chief Cameron and Supervisor Bollone, as well as the new Commissioner Geraldine Hart. So it certainly appears that this tragic incident has finally gotten the attention of our county legislators, and we look forward to seeing whatever they can support us to make sure that we continue to support the safety of our, and the security of our buildings.
Okay. Any other items or members of the public wishing to speak? Mrs. Shaw?
First, I wanted to say thank you for how Mrs. Burns and Dr. Ruhlman handled a matter that I had with them during the week. It was very excellent to handle, and I really appreciated it, and it was something professional and I love the person that we should meet, and so I want to thank you for that. But I came to you today because I wanted to discuss with you what, any plans you have on how you're going to go about handling the March 14 walkout. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'd like to go back.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a thing today, but I apologize. We are working with Dr. Bridgeman, and the Senate, and the administrators at large to ensure that we minimize any interruptions to education and to ensure the safety of the building, and the, you know, the security of the building and the safety of the children. But we have not come to any fast and firm conclusion yet as to how we're going to address it. We're weighing our options.
Okay. So what you're telling me is you're going to allow students to go out of the school?
That's not what I'm saying, Mrs. Shaw. I'm saying that we are trying to be realistic, but we are trying to determine what we can and what we should do in this particular environment. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, well, one thing, I come from a different perspective completely, and everybody wants to make this about the 2A, the Second Amendment. And I really, first off, I would like to ask the fundamental education question, and not to put you on the spot, but I want to know, do you, have you ever heard of, do you know what the Joint Dear Colleague Letter is of 2014?
I'm sorry.
The Joint Dear Colleague Letter of 2014.
No.
So you don't know what the Joint Dear Colleague Letter is, but the children are being led to believe that this is a thing against the Second Amendment. And the Joint Dear Colleague Letter is a letter that was sent to school districts across the entire country back in 2014, written by President Obama and Eric Holder, the Department of Justice, and the Department of Education, with Arne Duncan instructing guidance to school districts and law enforcement to, I don't want to come off sounding, you know, but I just want to do very, I want to be very pedestrian about this, but the point was, is they didn't want to have discipline children who were black, brown, or minority, or under the protected class, because they were feeling that children who fell under those categories were quickly pushed into the school prison pipeline. So this led to an unfortunate series of events, which you saw in Brownwood County, Brooklyn School District. And everybody between law enforcement and the school board and the FBI, they all dropped the ball. But this happened to become as, like, it's a consequence. There's, you know, the consequence of inaction, and the children were sitting ducks, and this was going on throughout the entire country. We've all watched as story after story went through the news about how children were, or even teachers, were bullied, and it was an entire protected class that wasn't being disciplined, and wasn't being punished, and wasn't being data collected on. So there was no record. So instead of people believing that this is an anti-gun, first, I want you to know why it even happened. You should all know what the Dear Colleague Letter is all about, and what the guidelines were, and what the purpose of it was for. And then, as a result, and as a consequence, we're dealing with what we're dealing now. And I advise everybody who's in this audience to go home and just put in Google "Joint Dear Colleague Letter, January 8th, 2014." And this you can read for yourself, but I specifically want you to take a look at the part where it says "disparate impact," and read what that actually means. And then you will find out how we got here today. And this has nothing to do with guns. No child should be able to come into a school wielding a backpack with any weapons. A child shouldn't fall through the cracks because people aren't willing to do their jobs because they were threatened with financial, federal government holding financial money against the school districts, against law enforcement agencies. I hope you follow me, because this is actually very complicated, and it doesn't, I'm not doing it the justice that should be done, because I'm in front of a microphone and a little nervous. But I also really worry that if we're going to let children out of the school, especially when we were talking, if it was Mr. O'Connor, you brought up something about the parental permission of when we release our children, that's dangerous. We're talking about dangerous times now, and we're talking about volatile, volatile climate in our schools. And we shouldn't be letting them be outside when they should be in their classrooms, learning and being educated, because as Mrs. Burns said, this is an instructional environment. And if you don't know what Dear Colleague Letter is, we certainly shouldn't be expecting kids to be falling in line with some sort of anti-Second Amendment march. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. Mr. Geller, I would comment that a huge discussion was what on possible close accounts, maybe something- something we shouldn't do, but, no. I think that that is definitely part of our ongoing discussions, and will continue to be so. Hey, Mrs. Angel?
Hi, everybody. Couple concerns I have, similar but not entirely the same, and I know that there will be many who disagree with me, maybe something to do, if this will matter. It's just my opinion, based on some facts, and some opinions, different topics. I just hear things around the community, and I came tonight, very, as usually challenges when I've been around. I'm very concerned about, I'm just with safety, and this has been going on, all these types of things have been going on for years. So the 40s are in their twenties now, we bombed for us back then, now we have the gun violence. Now it's becoming a little bit, up a little bit to the test, so I think you can all agree on that. And I honor you, and I do pray for all of you, and I'm happy to say one prayer, because that's a huge part of what I'm upset about, is that God forbid we say God. So I do pray for all of you. Even though we don't see I O many times on different topics, I pray for all of you, and will continue to do. I dread the day that we take God completely out of our schools, and I think that's a huge cultural issue that we have going on present day. I hope everybody keeps sneezing, so we can say God bless you to everybody. Very sad, very sad, because if you look at history, when they took prayer out of the schools, I'm not getting on this bandwagon to get prayer back in the school, I'm not fanatic, believe me I'm not, but I do feel that in a, in a, a culture that everything goes, anything can be said, you can fend everybody by every minute, every day, the fact that we can't say God unless it's offensive is really a sad day that we come to, okay? We can't even say, based on what the lady was talking about, if you look at the news, now we have kids holding signs saying no thoughts and prayers. It wouldn't sum to, I mean, I really hope we don't take that out of our schools, the moments of silence and the reverence we have, because let me tell you, the world really stinks, but without God, it'd be a lot worse. So I really hope, and I pray for all of you, that even though you can't pray and say God's name in public, I hope you continue to pray, because I really believe that that's a huge problem we have. And the reason why kids don't have a lot of hope now is because their faith is minimal. They have no super being that they can count on and go to, because God that we believe in, God, we're not popular now, it's not cool, it's not politically correct. So I'm happy to say that word, God. And even when I taught, I tried very hard to get that message across without using the word God or Christ. It's in your actions, it's in your fibers who you are. Okay, that's how our country was formed, the Judeo-Christian rules, not rules, guidelines, and it's so sad that we have to be ashamed to say that. And I just want to share that with you. With that said, regarding what the other mom was talking about, I think a lot of kids these days are very confused. I feel so bad for them, for all of them, especially all the children lost in Florida. I represent all those families, and again, it's very hard. None of us can put our fingers in all this, and I don't envy your job, I can only imagine how difficult it must be, and I do appreciate all you're doing, all the accomplish you're going to, and the meetings you're going to, but I can also say that, I've talked about this many times, there's just so much you can all do, and it comes initially with experts, I wish Mr. Zado was here, who was a former police officer. Well, living in New York or California, I doubt we're going to ever see armed guards in our front of our buildings. I doubt we're ever going to see concealed carry in New York. Again, I'm not going to get into debate about that, and people aren't different sides, but I think our children are not getting a fair, balanced education in social studies education. I feel that the literature, and I've read it, I've read it with my son through middle school courses, and this is not against the teachers, so I don't want my words twisted in any way, because I'm all on the side of the teachers most of the time, except when it comes to sensitivity issues. The literature, when you read it, and some of like the supplements, like the, I forget the name of the weekly readers, they're not weekly readers, but the Times, or whatever one you're using throughout the sixth or seventh or eighth grade curriculums, they all seem to take a position. I'll never forget the one that said, if your parents shop at Walmart, you're supporting child labor. Well, when you have someone in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, when they see those topics, and they see those, those very compelling emotional stories on one side, they're being, in a way, for me, conditioned to think a certain way. And you see in the colleges, God forbid, you have something to say, you can't say it anymore. I'm very concerned what we're teaching our children these days. I've said before, I'll say again, tolerance, I totally believe in. Accepting a person, I believe in. Being kind to a person, I believe in. But the day you accept other people's values and disagree with your values, you're giving up your freedoms. Okay, I'm certifying that stuff, I know what I'm talking about. Okay, there's many values, look at the high school, and I'm not talking about being mean to people or different groups of people, I'm talking about the basic element of choosing the way you want to believe, okay? And if you have a belief, you're not, if you say something, right away you're prejudiced or you're against people, and that's not the way our children should be educated. Feel very strongly about that. As far as, you know, like I said, you know, to me, I worry about things like, not just the school day, we have concerts, we have sport events. If you have a building like this, and you're all at a concert, and a shooter comes in from this angle, what are we going to do? Fair statement. And I like to melt guns, I want her to be like heaven, but it's not going to be. Heaven is heaven, it's earth, that's who we live in, okay? But my point is, we're all targets at every place, and I felt compelled to say it, not that I was going to make a change, but maybe just by sharing information, it may be different, who knows? But the reality is, we need to have security guards at every door during concerts and sport games. I had gone to, with my family, a basketball game this past weekend in Farm Hill State College, and when I walked in, I saw two armed guards, and I was like, I was so happy. Do I like guns? Of course not, I don't like violence. But the time we live in now, that place was mobbed, and it was a very intense game, and they had the different teams leave at different exits. So that's one issue, and I leave that to the experts to figure out how to do that, but I just, you know, for me to come and say that, it's a big deal, because I was, you know, when I first became a mom, all those years ago, 26 years ago, you know, I thought life was happy, and I wanted to be happy, but it's, we have to be realistic at the same time. The other thing, which is actually the mental part of this whole thing, I've said it for many years, and I'll say it again, kids who are forgotten ones get divorced rap. Okay, I do bully presentations, you know I work as a speaker of bullying education, and it's always the victim that we're concerned about. The bystanders obviously make the best difference to the court, the CDC report to say something that did work very well for it. But the issue is that sometimes we demonize the kids who are labeled bull, and those are the kids who need the most help, equally, I guess, to the victim, to understand. And one of the things that I know can make a huge difference is teacher sensitivity training. And what do I mean by that? When I go to my workshops, and I work with children, elementary and middle school, I say to them, we talk all about what bullying is, all that typical stuff we're all familiar with, and then I'll have a child say to me, well, what happens if you teach a bully? So I kind of, you know, I answer it very diplomatically, and I do address it, but then I kind of use it in my workshops, and I'll say to children, okay, so how many of you have been bullied by a teacher? And they'll get like, ooh, like taboo, you know? And I'll say, okay, well, let me put it this way, maybe not bullied, have it not treated nicely, for instance, how many of you had a teacher who will say, and look at you with an expression like, you mean you don't know this? Don't you know this? We did this yesterday. How come you don't know this? Aren't you studying? I just did this yesterday. Why don't you know this? In front of all the children. That, from first grade all through 12th grade, will set a pattern, and the children observing all these behaviors will notice that child being singled out and not liked by the teacher. And then when some teacher shares this information with the next teacher, the next teacher, that child now has reputation. Why would they want to bother a child in school? And they already have a dean of problem child. Then I say to children, how many of you had a teacher who says things like this? Oh, don't worry about it, come to my extra help, I'd love to have you. It's a pedimental mistake, that's what you learn. It's a big difference, and I know this happens in classrooms. Fortunately, I can show you that most kids raise their hand to the center of the screen, and I can't even see them first. And I know it's here, and I know it's every school district, and the subtle words like, how come you don't know this? Why don't you study this? We did this yesterday. That's shaming a child. And when we, when we take the time to talk to children correctly, go back to college, and use the tools you learn, instead of too much sarcasm, yes, some kids get along with sarcasm, it's fine, that's how they work, they work with you with that, but we have to pay attention to the words we use with children, we have to watch the way we look at children, they're so smart, they're like fun, just soak it all in, okay? That, to me, is not an easy fix, but it's a lot easier than the other things I mentioned, which hopefully we'll see in the future. The other thing I want to talk about is equally a little stressful, but I'm just maybe a little confused. I heard some things about a red district that I'm not too sure of, and I just figured I'd come here and find out. I understand, and again, this has nothing to do with my child, because my child is very, very smart, he's going to high school next year, my last one, but I'm not looking for him to be a valedictorian, a salutatorian, something to do with that at all. I don't think he had the grades for that, I'm not looking for that, I'm not about that, but I am curious to why we're dealing with it, and why we're not having the honored kids have weighted averages as opposed to across the board, and we're putting them in the same as category. And I'm very concerned about sameness. So I just was curious what led to that decision.
Okay, so we had an advisory committee for that, and really, the biggest reason why we look to eliminate the weighting is, and also the ranking, because first of all, we know throughout, throughout the country, less than 20% of the schools look at any kind of public schools ranking, because they have their own system. And so sometimes they put some at a false, students at a false, you know, belief system about where they are. Also, sometimes if you include rank, like, for example, I had a colleague in a nearby district who had a student who was not in the top 10%, but of their student body, but still had tremendous grades, and was not worth the opportunity of going to the Ivy League school, because they weren't in the top percent of that school, but while everything else was involved, that, that, that student would go in there. But really, the weighting came from is because we have really kind of done our own research here, at the high school and in the district, and finding that students who really are suffering or struggling with this idea about having to be the best, and being able to try to get, you know, that point-10th of a, you know, in their grades, so that they can move up, to get that kind of weighting that they want, and the rank that they want. And as we found out is, they had students making choices about courses based on the weighting, not on the value of the course, but that and their future careers.
Can you give an example of such a course?
Yeah, so for example, the Cisco course, you would have somebody there, it's a weighted course, and you have a student who might be in there, and I remember this as one of the technology teachers saying, I never saw this before happening in my line of work, but the student would not, had no interest of being in the class, but was just there in order to get the rank, the weighting on there, so knowing that there, 95 would be worse, you know, 1.15. Conversely, you have the left ways, which are not weighted, which are supposed to be enriching and provide, you know, enhancing students' experiences, and students who are not, the top students aren't taking them because they're not weighted.
Okay, so I think I understand that.
So we're not eliminating honoring students who are doing well, we will have academic, once the weighting goes out, we will still have academic leaders.
That's what I'm concerned about. The reason I'm concerned is that, I just, I don't know, I try to make my voice very carefully, I just feel that if there are children who want to try for that really high rank, that really high, you know, rank, and that title, I just feel that that's their freedom to do so. I mean, well, let me explain what I'm saying by that. What I mean by that is, if they're taking a class, it's kind of like, who's to say that class is easier or not easier? You know, that could be one example, but for instance, like, some people might be really good in art, and some people might really, you know, take, for instance, somebody might, somebody might have something in music or in art that's really easy for them, or really hard for everybody else, but if they take the class that's easy for them, and they happen to get a really high grade, that's smart. I mean, I just kind of feel like this, okay, maybe I should ask you this question, what are the criteria for the academic leader? And how, because the reason I'm asking these questions is, I knew that, I kind of heard the great fight this spring, it was a very big, busy year for me, having been looking to the board meetings, having seen this publicized, went to my son's, you know, high school meeting, and it's not even out there. And I mean, this is the kind of thing that I would think that'd be like a town meeting, get input from the parents, and, you know, get ideas for this, perhaps put in a letter, because this is a different handbook, but I just feel like, I taught my children that it's always going to be someone smarter than you, and you're always going to be smarter than somebody else. And I think what we're, what we're doing with kids these days is we're trying to make everybody feel so wonderful, and that's-
I think you're misunderstanding the purpose of this, because really, when you talk about academic leaders, what we're talking about here is, we are using our students. Like, for example, it would be, you know, your top 10 students would be eligible for these, you know, and we would have to designate, you know, a valedictorian or a salutatorian, and as I mentioned in a presentation, I think the group of education is truly, valedictorian really means to be saying farewell, it was never meant to be the highest of the grade in there. A salutatorian is someone who is bringing, welcoming the new class in. That's the basis of that. And I really think, like, you actually made the point for me too, is, there's no, you know, we can't say every AP course is the same rigor, it's not, but to put same weighting on them arbitrarily, or IB courses, or honor courses, you know, each course is on its strength of itself, and we want students to be able to challenge themselves for the value of education, not for the grade.
I just don't want, I just feel, I'm sorry to jump to, I just don't want the children to be micromanaged, that they have to be so watched, that they, you know, I mean, I can't imagine every, you know, most students of that caliber taking classes that are easy for them to get on a grade.
I'm not doing that, but what's happening is that you're, you're not taking courses that could benefit them.
But who gets to decide that?
This is actually giving them more freedom.
But that's what I'm saying, who gets, if they're 18-year-old, 17, 18, who gets to, who's deciding for them? That's what I'm saying, why can't the students decide what's best for them, as far as their classes?
I'm trying to tell you that this gives them more freedom to decide what's in their best interests, based on the difficulty of the course, based on what their interests are. So when Dr. Lundy, Mrs. Burns first brought this to the board, I'm going to admit, I was skeptical about it, okay? No question about it. But the more I thought about it, the more I realized, you know, the kids are very clever, okay? And certainly, the ones that are interested in being highly ranked, whether it's valedictorian or just in the top 20, top 30, whatever the, whatever it may be, they figure out from, before they get into the high school, what courses they can take, which will boost up their weighted GPAs. Now, those courses may not have anything to do with the field of interest they have, they may or may not be the hardest weighted courses.
But why should they have to be this well-rounded education? That's what I'm trying to say.
No.
I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Mrs. Angel, this whole process will give them a more well-rounded education, because to just simplify it, you know, our kids, every year, we sit and we decide who's going to be valedictorian, a salutatorian, based on the final GPA. There have been years that some of those kids have been separated by less than a tenth of a point.
As it should be, that's my whole point, but it's not fair.
But this process, let me, please, let me finish. This process will allow us to take those scholars, 10 of them, and among those 10 students, all of whom will be high-achieving students, look at exactly what you've just pointed out, that whole rounded education. So it's not just, the importance is not just placed on the actual GPA, we're looking at the entire experience, whether the child was involved in the music program, in after-school activities, in the athletic program, and it will give them a better opportunity to be successful when they move beyond our four walls to college, or a career, or whatever their other choices may be. But it's important not to be so directed on one thing, which is the GPA, as opposed to, yes, grades are certain, you know, success in classes is certainly important, but just as important are all those other things that we offer, and if they're not important, then why would we spend a lot of time and money on those things?
I understand you're saying that.
And by the way, this is, we did discuss this here on multiple occasions over period of months.
What I'm saying is, I understand what you're saying, theoretically, I think it makes a good point, I think that can be said for every student, regardless of level you're at, but the concern that I had is that, who's making those decisions? What is the criteria for those 10 scholars? And why isn't that listed someplace, what the criteria is before, before the decision is made? So you have a class of 2021, that this will affect, but there's nothing in writing, all that's in writing is two different handbooks, I don't see any difference, differentiation between what's happening. Let me give you a firm example of what I'm concerned about. I said, this won't affect my child, this, I'm trying to teach my child that the world is not going to be fair, that it's up to him to do his best, his potential, and I find that my concern about this academic leader is that, where do you draw the line? You know, it's 10, what is going to be the criteria? Is go- Is go, if everything in the world is honest, healthy competition, there's nothing like, like healthy competition. But when that competition is not honest and there's no integrity and it's based on who knows who, who, and this has happened, not just in this district, in other districts as well. So the criteria has to be very well defined because I remember years ago, they had the WISE program. And I was very concerned about the WISE program because children were selected based on teacher recommendation with absolutely no criteria. No one even knew about it, families didn't even know about it. And this is the concern I have. I know you all have a very difficult, challenging job to do with so many characters of your, of your careers, I know that. But things like this have to be discussed with the community. And Mr. Gell, to your point, I know, I know what you're saying, look, no one's here. And that's our, you can't help that. And I don't, I understand, I understand you can't help that. But because of that, we need to write letters. A letter should have gone out to the community saying, starting in 2021, that class will no longer have valedictorians, salutatorians. We will be moving on to academic leaders and these are the parameters if you want your child to pursue that goal. The same with community service. Let me explain my community service issue for 2022 class, okay? Community service is wonderful. I'm from a Boy Scout family, all my boys are Boy Scouts, they do community service. It's, we expect it as a family. But who are we to tell other families what to do with their children to make it a requirement? And the only concern I have about that is now the children are doing community service because they have to, not because they want to. And that's the difference that arises when you go to college. I wanted to do community, community service for the right reason, not because I was told I have to. These are the concerns that I have and this is what our culture is turning into and I'm very concerned about it. You know, I just, I, I know you're, I'm sure your heart's in the right place. I just think that you need to think things through and just make sure you inform the community because, and to be honest, people won't care as much as I care. But I have a feeling that the part of this is about jealousy and parents don't have fun with you all the time and I can't imagine, you know, my kid, no one's made, you know, you know, like you said, a tenth of a point. I just feel the kids, as far as I'm almost finished, I, I feel like the kids who are in honor classes, and again, I've had one with special ed, one with middle of the road and one with a little more of the road. I remember when I had, had my son with a learning disability, above average IQ, I would have to advocate like heck for him to get what he needed to get. And I had data like this big and I had to prove his disability and prove what I was trying to get for him. And now we're having a daily programs, we're letting people just take classes because they want to and because they feel like it's a good idea and want to try their best. Well, you know, the reality is, is if you don't have an average, you can't try this class. I know it sounds nice to try best and see if it works for you, but I remember the day I had to prove a disability, not, not even regular ed. So now we're getting into a case where, you know, I'm just very concerned about these things. And finally, the other thing I wanted to tell you is, oh, that's what I was going to say, but the honors students, okay? I, I always feel kids should always reach for potential and do the best they can and they should always strive and do the best and pick challenging classes. But it's important to be not reward those children. So now they're going to be taking honor courses, they're not going to get weighted. So my, my, now of course me and people, people, I'm sure many people is okay, well, do it anyway because that's what you can do or you should try your best, you should, you know, take a challenge. But many kids are going to say, why the heck would I want to take an honors class and not get any for it? Which is the real world, not in education though. And I have many friends in family education, we get tenure and we, we, oh my gosh, well, we put teachers through for four years, my gosh, it's ridiculous what we put teachers through, how much scrutiny and how much work and stress they go through. And they get good tenure and they get one of that praise every year.
Mrs. Hansel, let me ask you a question.
So I can just finish my one point of saying.
Sure.
As opposed to rewarding people for work well done. And that's what I'm concerned about.
And that's the nature of my question. Do you believe that there may be students who take an honors course and find them relatively easy to breeze through by virtue of the fact that they've been gifted with the ability to be successful in that course?
But that's their, that's their, that's their gift. You might have a student who has artistic degrees.
I agree with you. And then would you say that there are students with disabilities that may take a course that may be less rigorous, but truly work beyond as hard as they can and may still struggle, but they give more effort than perhaps that student sitting in the honors class?
I don't know about that. I think there's apples and oranges.
Well, then I, I guess we'll have to agree to disagree because I think there's a lot of students out there that have been presented with challenges in life, that work harder than some of our, you know.
But you remove measures that work in order. I, I understand, I agree with you philosophically, you do, but in reality, data is data. And again, you know, just because I want to do something doesn't mean I have the right to do. You, you have to have parameters. I had this parameter, I had to prove a disability. I was told that one of, one of the allegations my son had was written notes for tests, written out notes, not to the definition, written out notes. I was told that was cheating because it would not be fair to the rest of the student body. My son had a memory issue, there's no way he could achieve it. So you're talking to someone, I, I understand, but I understand what I'm saying as well.